Mine. So bad. You knew it was doing this. He's closing this.
Oh.
When I started. I just want to. That's right.
So they.
Yep. I didn't notice anything. I'm sorry.
That's kind of. So we.
Are they the lead up to Thompson?
Can they snuck that?
Sure. Yeah.
But now, no.
No.
If we would be enough to find out.
Eight, what she had said. Spray a shot.
In a little bit of a cool summer.
Good for. It's a good snack maybe. So this week, yeah. Right? It's a weird fact. The first job. All of them really know. Go off like it like it.
Sure.
Hey, good evening. Andrew Steiger's here.
With some practice.
It was like the. You had.
I know. That's what I was thinking.
I think.
You told me.
Not for this.
Well, that's from. V O A. We had word of adjustment at noon.
Oh.
This is our second public meeting today.
I'll leave some screens from here.
We're driving on.
Oh. Hi, George. How are you?
But. Traveling was very slow.
You're stressing the whole. Murdered this day. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh.
Well, I think. It's definitely canceled. You've been doing it. I'm like.
It's on something.
Hmm.
In Chicago. See my son.
Yeah. What? Was that right?
She.
Here you go.
No, I haven't really been.
Perfect.
Oh, we're he's getting married in September, so. We're. All engaged and getting that.
Yeah. Love her.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Around Chicago. Oh, I think I see a student for a tux person fitted for a tux out of Chicago, which took fifteen minutes.
Getting to do it there.
We had to go to the Guinness bar. Yeah. 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 And then. Really? Omaha made a hand one. I'm not sure. I were done. Omaha. I don't know if he did. Yep. It's Nordstrom. I just but not fit. Or.
Yeah. It's good to real.
They're real large. Yeah. There wasn't anyone that's Nordstrom, it's happened that their own.
Ah, no.
Shop. Just that. I get. Sorry.
Yep.
I will now call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. The time is five forty five P M. Hillary, would you call the roll, please?
Thompson?
Yes.
Steiger?
Here.
Samuelson?
Here.
Forst?
Here.
Eden? Henders? Reaganator?
Here. Um. Item number three is the approval of tonight's agenda. Any changes uh to this evening's agenda? Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. Thompson motions.
Samuelson will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four is the approval of the June ninth, twenty twenty five minutes. Any changes or additions to those minutes? Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the June ninth, twenty twenty five minutes. Thompson motions.
Steiger second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'd like to welcome the folks that have joined us here in person tonight, as well as those on Zoom. Would any members of the public who are here in person tonight like to make a comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? And anyone on Zoom, same question. Hearing nothing, we'll move on to our first substantive item, a public hearing and recommendation on a rezoning request from Diligent Development to change fourteen point eight six seven acres north of Blooming Heights from A R Agricultural Reserve to R one sixty, single family residential. We'll open the public hearing at five forty seven P M. Elliot, would you brief us on this item, please?
Yep. So this is a rezoning proposal north of the third plat of Blooming Heights. Platform recently went through city council, which um just because of the the phasing timing is located south of of where we're at. Um, so this would be, or we've we've kind of drafted it out as uh plat five. Um consecutive number wise, but not uh not as far as the boundaries go. So um north side of Red Bud Street as it curves north near Green Leaf Circle. Um, it's located within our future land use designation of low density residential. So the request is for R one, single family. That's what the future land use plan says it can be. Um, so. Recommendation from staffs for approval. Have you take any questions?
Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to make a comment on item number six?
Brad Cooper, Cooper Crop and Associates, Eric Horn Camp with Diligence also here for any questions. Uh, we don't have an approved concept through the city yet, so we haven't got anything to show you, but we're looking at nineteen to twenty single family lots that range from eighty to ninety foot in width.
Would any members of the public like to comment on item number six?
What was that question?
Would any members of the public like to comment on item six?
Do.
Um, so you'll just need to come up to the microphone and then we'll just need your name and your address, please.
Name, Ben Roberts, address twenty three forty three Green Leaf Circle. Um, questions if there's been any habitat studies down there. There's a bunch of wildlife. Um, any assessments on future, you know, land values or property value? As my house sits right on the back with another obstructed view and the clients would look like it would add residential housing right behind thus reducing home value.
Elliot, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I don't know that we have any of those specifics before the commission.
Not anything, not anything on any wildlife studies or anything like that. It's not a a thing that typically is done with a rezoning request. Um, as far as value is concerned, um residential next to residential in real terms doesn't affect property value on a um assessment market. Um, value in that case would be a perceived change uh from a property owner, which is legitimate. Um, we have to operate in real terms and considering proposals like this.
Sure.
What does real terms mean?
So if if you're talking about a loss in value.
Yep.
Like, there's no, there isn't really an example of single family development next to single family development, changing the assessed value perhaps.
So my assessed value is more on that side than the houses on the other street up with houses behind it. So to appear that it you when I was, when I sold or bought it, that land was more than the one right above because it didn't have anything behind it.
Sure, and I can't speak to the assessor's method for that. Um.
Well, I'm getting taxed on it, the higher of land value.
Sure, and that's a conversation to have with Warren County, not not the city of Norwalk, but um you know, they have the right to develop land and that's, you know, the thing that we're considering tonight is a rezoning to allow that to happen.
What's the further steps in this and?
So um we would recommend make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will then take up that agenda item. You would also have an opportunity to talk to city council. Um, and then they make the final decision about the rezoning.
Care when we get notices?
Um, I don't know if they would be.
Those will be considered at the August seventh meeting.
Okay.
Which is at six o'clock in this room.
Was that put it on the notice they got before Elliot or?
I believe so. Yeah.
Okay. So but will they get a separate notice of city council?
No, but I can verify if that was in the letter and if not, they can send notices out again. There's not a timeframe really that a letter needs to go out uh just before. Meeting.
Okay. And just to kind of, you know, reiterate your concerns, it's not just the reduction in property value, but more a reduction in the sightline.
Yeah.
Of the view that you will have.
The view primarily, um, there's a lot of wildlife back there. See it every day. Then, and I would like to be known that everything that I've done, all the value, the land purchased is significantly more than the land across the street because of what it doesn't back up to. So I mean, in any other assessed value, if it's a thing like a golf course, that is assessed differently than if you're backing up to another house.
A golf course can also be developed at a future date. If the people who.
Going through the. Body can. The proper channels is, I I agree.
Sure. Just be aware of that.
Yes, I'm just saying, like, when I bought it, there was no plat five that was agricultural. Understood that's part of the plan, but throwing it like that area. I don't, I mean, I'm not a developer, but twenty houses seems like a lot back there if you're just trying to cram them in. I don't know. I could be way off, but.
The proposed eighty to ninety foot wide lots would be uh larger than the Green Leaf Circle lots.
So they'd be larger than the executive lots, as they said today.
I believe so. Are they seventies? I think they were uh a mix of seventy five to eighty in class three. These will be all mineral candy probably, but we have a big row of ninety's on the the east side of the road as it goes down, Red Bud. I know that north side was zoned R one seventy. I guess I don't recall the initial lighting of it. But. Yes, there should be equal one style homes. It's not, I I wanted to characterize it as cramming homes in there at the size that they proposed.
Any other comments you had for?
Nope, that'll be it.
Great. Thank you so much for participating. Did the members of the commission have any questions before we close the public hearing?
Is it atypical to think about um? I know, look at environmental things, but wildlife, if you are, because it's like it is a wooded area to consider the impacts on the environment and taking the habitat of the natural things there.
Do you ever? Nice. We don't have ordinances in effect requiring that.
Now, a question, warm comment, deer, turkey, dozens, et cetera, all back in that chunked wooded area that are in there consistently. And I don't know if I can request one done. I don't know if that's a reasonable request, but.
You don't have the authority to entertain a request like that.
And I'm not aware of any D N R rules that would prevent development for just regular native wildlife. There are requirements to study and do mitigation if there's uh endangered wildlife there. You know, and those are parts of their development process that they'll go through. That's not done by the city, but uh, yeah.
And that is likely something that diligent would have done when they purchased the land. Um, if that was something they needed to do, if it was a requirement. Um. Any other questions from the commission? Before we close the public hearing? Hearing nothing, we'll close the public at five fifty five P M. And just a reminder to the public and the commission, it's, you know, we're just deliberating as a commission now. There's no further public comment allowed at this point. Um. What deliberation do we have, Commissioner?
I've got it. This is Andrew. I've got a question. Um, is the, will this uh continue Red Bud on north with a dead end, how it's built today for future growth to the north? Or will this be a cul-de-sac and or loop?
The the current concept we're playing with that we've been sharing with the city staff is uh to extend Red Bud uh to the north. And then as we get close to the creek, Middle Creek, we would have a hammerhead that would then divert the road towards the east that would ultimately come out on Fiftieth in the future.
Okay.
I forget the exact alignment, Brad, but.
It's similar to that.
Something along this line.
The Hicksons that live off of Fiftieth are the co-owner of this property and they really don't want any, a lot of development around them, but this particular area um is not very easy for them to even see because of all the trees between this and uh and their site, their house. And there isn't any, there's never a a wildlife study required. Um, there's one city in the metro that I'm aware of, Johnston, that does require a tree count. So there is a little bit of exchange of trees post developments. They're the only city I know of that does that.
Yeah, this is Andrew again. So I watched plot three get developed because I lived in Blooming Heights and there was a lot of wildlife in plot three that is no longer there now, obviously with all the houses. So like with every new plot that's gone into Blooming Heights, it has impacted tree count uh in a negative way. And obviously moved wildlife outside of Blooming Heights um with every plot, additional plot that's happened. So I've I've watched it. I've seen it happen. And and so I I think it's something that we yes, we should think about. But also we have to, I think as a commission, think about what's best and one of the things that Elliot, you and Luke have talked to us a lot about is, you know, uh our our taxes are pretty high in Norwalk and and, you know, how do we do that? We do, how do we help that? We help that by having more people share in that tax burden. Um, and I know that primarily comes through medium and high density housing, which, you know, it I it's good that these are single family uh and you're not requesting a medium or high density housing uh development here, I think. Um, that will, that would definitely impact um uh land value, I think. So but adding from what I've seen, adding single family uh would would just continue to help grow our community and and the right direction that we wanted to go.
Yeah, I guess my position on it is that, given the comprehensive plans intention that that eventually becomes R one. I I can't think of a legitimate reason as a commission that we wouldn't approve the rezoning request.
Other plans for that Timberview Drive to continue north to connect into this at all? Like, is it?
I, what you.
Nothing on the file.
Nothing. What you sketched up, I've essentially zone something very similar. For that, yeah.
Yep.
And I think that I'd agree, there's nothing that prevents us from recommending approval from this and it's always the most difficult challenge that we have when we come to this is that when land adjacent to an existing property owner, whether that be a cornfield or in this instance, a pasture or prairie ground that is converted uh into residential is always the the most difficult. But again, I I don't see anything that we can say that, no, this should not be developed ground.
And I guess I should add a caveat to my comment in addition to what you just said, A J, is I would encourage you all to participate in the city council meeting in that process because the city council can um consider a lot more than we can. Um, so, you know, I appreciate you participating today and I would encourage you to continue to, you know, make your voices heard in that process. Any other deliberation from the commission? Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion to approve the rezoning request from Diligent Development to change the fourteen point eight six seven acres north of Blooming Heights from A R Agricultural Reserve to R one sixty, single family residential.
Samuelson motion.
Thompson seconds.
Hillary, would you call the roll, please?
Forst?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Steiger?
Aye.
Samuelson?
Aye.
Reaganator?
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Item number seven is a request from H R C Norwalk LLC for approval of the final plat of Holland Point, plat three. Elliot, would you brief us on this item, please?
Yep, absolutely. Um, so this is a plat on the east side of the Holland Point Development. Um, if the numbers are getting a little bit confusing because we've had one, two, and four. Um, we did our best to project when they were going to be coming out chronologically. They're not falling in line that way. Um, it's not as confusing as it sounds. It's just my uh nomenclature. Um, so at any rate, uh, this plat represents a continuation of a couple of street stubs that are existing right now, just south of Waller Avenue. Uh, they will be connecting to each other uh between Myron Street and Hurst Street with a small cul-de-sac in the middle. Um, as you can see in the aerial image here, the uh trail that spans the width of the development will be continued to the east and then also dive south. Um, continuing as a rear yard path, similar to everything in phase one. So uh, these are all intended to be single family dwellings, is my understanding. Um, that's pretty much everything that I've got. I know we have Caleb online from Hubble and also the project engineer Emily Harding with C D A. If there are any questions for them, otherwise I'm actually answering what I can.
Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to make a comment on item number seven?
Yeah, this is Caleb Smith with Hubble Realty Company. Um, Elliot's done a great job kind of explaining this plat. I think uh we are wrapping up construction out there and they were down to just getting some trail work done, uh, which they are hopefully going to be able to get done here if it stops raining. Um, but other than that, everything's coming together pretty well. Um, just happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Caleb. Any public comment on this item? Any questions from the commission or comments?
Hey, Megan, I have one.
Yeah.
Question, just. I can't see it now, but you talked about the narrative about going down and connecting to Colonial. Or is another step toward that?
Yeah, so eventually, yep, this.
That's the road right there. Okay.
So Myron Street is gonna eventually um go far enough south to to hit that connection, George.
Alright.
The uh, the plan, I believe, uh, if I'm remembering right, is for Lund, I think one street over to the west from Hurst uh to intersect at Colonial with the roundabout.
Hmm.
The idea being to keep truck traffic out of the neighborhood.
Oh.
So.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further from the commission, I would entertain a motion to approve the final plat of Holland Point, plat three.
Forrest, the motion.
Steiger second.
Hillary, would you call the roll, please?
Thompson?
Aye.
Steiger?
Aye.
Samuelson?
Aye.
Forst?
Aye.
Reaganator?
Aye. Thanks, everyone. Item number eight is a request from Sunset Estates Norwalk LLC for approval of the final plat of Sunset Estates, plat five. Elliot, would you brief us on this one, please?
Sure. So this is an appropriately numbered plat in terms of consecutivity. Um, just north of plat four on Sunset Estates, uh, this one straddles Orchard Hills Drive um with an additional, I forget the quantity, twenty, oh, I'm sorry, thirty B-ish. Damn it. Sorry, that's really hard to read.
Three to three.
Uh, thirty three. I knew it was what I was gonna get there eventually tossing out numbers. So thirty three, single family lots. Um, continuation of Shady Lane Drive, the idea being that eventually that's gonna connect to Shady Lane to the east. I know some, sometimes it gives folks the willies to to contemplate, you know, streets that get separated off from from where they're gonna continue in the future. Um, when McClure was doing the concepting for this, uh, they determined that that's street alignment. If the freeze property sells someday, ultimately would line up with where Shady Lane is. Um, so just trying to aim for some continuity there. Um, otherwise, the parkman dedication to this has already been taken care of. The one thing, um actually, no, that's that's pretty much it. Um, I've got nothing else to to add on this phase. Um, I do believe the the project engineer for this, I was mentioning earlier that uh Jake Becker is no longer with McClure. He he's moved on to something else. And so uh Michael Gaunt is here representing McClure, though he's not been closely uh tied to this. Um, but we wish Jake the best. We always had a good relationship with him. So I'll do my best to answer any questions. Um, that's all I have.
Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to speak on item number eight?
I'll just uh pop on real quick to introduce myself. Yeah, Michael Gaunt with McClure Engineering. Um, we, uh, McClure has been working on quite a few of these Sunset Estate plats over the last few years. Uh, I am here uh primarily to see if there's any questions that I might need to take back to our client, but uh I think Elliot has pretty well covered it.
Great. Thanks, Michael. Any questions or deliberation from the commission?
Elliot, you mentioned that the park is already covered or we probably just call it green space because parks rare, parks are rare here. Where's the park at?
It is just to the southeast, uh, kind of this notch that's uh cut out here is one of the parcel lines on it. Uh, if I can pull it up in the assessor, if that's a little easier to see. Yeah, so it's this parcel here. Now, sorry, pulled up the plat shape. So a future phase is gonna have a little bit more street frontage uh in the northeastern corner of the plat. Um, that's is the way that they designed it from the from the outset.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or deliberation from the commission?
One more question. I know once we finally connect Orchard Hills up into the the housing development to the north, a lot of those folks are gonna use Orchard Hills to get to their houses. Um. Have we accounted for that extra uh car automobile traffic that's gonna come north on Orchard Hills up into uh High Road and those housing developments up there?
I I mean, a traffic study hasn't been done, but that's gonna definitely relieve pressure on High Road. So uh the more ways in and out of a place that you can get kind of the better. And I think the assessment from our city engineer at least is that that's not raising any concerns from a volume perspective.
There actually was a traffic study way back when the prelim plat, like six or seven.
I stand corrected. I guess there was. Um.
Yeah, anticipated to have volume, kind of like you said, uh, secondary output from uh the legacy development itself down to uh north half, and certainly with elementary school there now, uh, that'll that'll certainly change traffic patterns.
Okay, no, I just wondered because it feels like um as we, as we continue these plats one at a time, it it's pretty easy to be laser focused on a single plat, but looking at big picture, um, you know, your main traffic is uh G fourteen and then Beardsley, and that's a big gap between those two. So if if High Road now continues on to the west and finally uh taps back into G fourteen, um, you know, there's it's not, it's not designed to be a through road at all, like G fourteen or Beardsley are. And so, um, you know, it it will definitely alleviate things for sure, but um yeah, it would, it would. I I maybe, maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, when High Street was was, you know, in its infant stage and really just barely on Highway twenty eight. Maybe it didn't really play a a factor, but uh, that would have been nice if that was a, had. uh, that would have been nice if that was a had larger um, easements that we could have expanded that wider, that that could be more of a a through street east-west as as our city continues to grow and fill in all these cornfields. Sorry, that was a total rabbit trail from what we're trying to talk about, but I'm good to hear that we're we're creating more ways for those folks in, you know, on those developments on High Road and and north of there to to get in and out of their communities.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion to approve the final plat of Sunset Estates Plat five.
Steiger motion. Sorry, I'll take second. You Thompson, you can have motion.
Hillary, would you call the roll, please?
Thompson.
Aye.
Steiger.
Aye.
Samuelson.
Aye.
Forrest.
Aye.
Reaganator.
Aye. Thanks, everyone. Item number nine is a request from Sherman Hill Real Estate Partnership LLC for approval of the site plan of D Moss. Elliot, would you brief us on this item, please?
Yes, and if anybody was curious about, um, the the updated plans, I did, uh, put an updated version of this into the PDF. Um, today, basically just we had Jason clean up some technical details and there was a an edit we were waiting for on the architectural elevations. So, um, that stuff's taken care of, which is excellent. Um, yeah, so this is the, uh, development lot located, uh, southeast corner of Turnberry Road and Sunset Drive. Um, this was originally split in two back when we had a um, car wash proposal on the table. That ended up not happening. They never filed the final plat. Um, so that one's Nolan Boyd's, therefore it's one piece of land. And so now the plan is for B Moss to develop the site here. This is the general layout, thirteen thousand square foot building. Um, with the parking lot kind of oriented, it's an odd kind of shoe or slipper shaped lot. Um, parking lot in the ankle and the toe. Um, so one of the things that the, uh, the PUD allowed for here was kind of a reduced, um, reduced setbacks on a couple of sides. One thing that was also required was, uh, doing some landscaping between the parking and the road on the Turnberry side. So we had, um, Jason have a look at that and make sure that was make sure that was taken care of. Otherwise, one of the benefits of being in this location is that it's part of regional detention. So detention is handled off-site. Um, which allows them to maximize the use of the space. And, um, that kind of summarizes everything from the from the top down. Um, the elevations here, the the main change that that we had to make was just, um, cut down the uh, fiber cement paneling on one side. Um, it was just a little bit higher than than it was supposed to be, but otherwise largely remain the same. So I'm happy to answer any questions I can. Uh, we also have Jason Ledden to Snyder and Associates with us tonight.
Comment on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, good evening. Jason Ledwin with Snyder. Elliot did a good job there. Um, we do, we will say that we agree to address city staff comments if if they haven't already. We haven't given Elliot quite the time to look at it, but yeah, we'll address the architectural elevations to meet city code requirements. We'll have to answer any questions.
Any questions deliberation from the commission?
Will have like an urgent care as well as just like specialty type of thing that might have different hours outside of normal business?
I believe it's just specialty for demos. We'll mention one unique thing about this building is due to the grade elevation difference between the city state bank and on the south and Turnberry Road is that building will kind of sit into the hillside there. So kind of the the grade elevation will be up above with the finishing of the building under the hill. Very unique.
Any other questions or deliberation from the commission? Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan of D Moss.
Steiger motion.
Forrest, a second.
Hillary, would you call the roll, please?
Thompson.
Aye.
Steiger.
Aye.
Samuelson.
Aye.
Forrest.
Aye.
Reaganator.
Aye. Thanks, everyone. George, update for us?
Oh, before we do, I had a quick question on that last.
So sorry.
You're fine. I was hesitating for a little bit. I was reading that, right? The bike trail or sidewalk is on the east side of the property. Away from Highway twenty-eight.
There is a or by private drive next to the Domino's.
Yeah, George, if you're talking about. Yeah, it's just a private street.
Oh, okay. I was looking at it wrong. I I thought it was a bike trail. Where's where's the sidewalk and bike trail go?
So sidewalk will just just be on the north side of the site and then it's not visible in the satellite imagery here, but should be sidewalk along the
Got you.
North side of.
I was just reading around. That's what I was like, question.
Yep. So.
Thank you. Um. Anything with the city, um.
We haven't met for a while. So we just realized that.
Oh, actually, it's been relatively quiet until this came along, but I think I passed that on. Oh, here.
You're excited about it. You're excited about Bucky's.
I've never been to a Bucky's. I've I've learned more and more about it. So, but I I really have nothing to say.
It's a good transition into what Holly probably has to share with us tonight. I'll I'll give you the floor.
Thanks, Megan. Um, you should have a packet in front of you. One is the economic development, just our monthly report that goes to council that all the departments um, submit to council once a month. So that just has a lot of, um, business and development updates and media and marketing initiatives, some of the state and national economic changes and updates. Um, there's a bunch of QR codes in there for different things because there's so much more information. So if you're really bored and you want to see it all, you can always scan those codes. Um, one of them is to our new Norwalk Central website, which is pretty cool. If you guys get a chance to check that out, we've really tried to get everything in there and just make it a comprehensive and and clean site so people can find their way around Norwalk Central and all the different businesses and activities um, in there. And then, um, Bucky's flyer that's attached to the front of your little, uh, packet there, what George was talking about, if you guys haven't seen that in the news or on social media yet. It's just a kind of movement that's been picking up a lot of speed. Uh, the mayor really wanted us to reach out and just do something to grab Bucky's attention because they've been expanding north. They started out in Texas and then in the south. I don't know if anybody else has been there, but um, when people go there, they become obsessed, kind of like quick start on steroids. Um, so we created a petition and, um, a Facebook page and Instagram page and right away Simon Conway Show connected back and wanted an interview. So the mayor and Chris went and did that. And then pretty much all of the other news stations within a day popped on the bandwagon. So if you haven't signed the petition yet, please do so. Um, there's information there and online. It's all over the place, but please sign it because we will um, actually meet with them if they'll accept a meeting with us. And the governor's kind of on board with this movement too, and we have a professional proposal prepared for them. So if that works, we'll do the same effort for like an Aldi's and, you know, the next couple of things that we um, go after. So kind of fun. Um, a few weeks ago, I did go with the governor to Minneapolis to meet with microfoods headquarters and, um, you know, they're just such a great amazing big company. They're international. They've spent over a hundred and fifty million dollars here just in Norwalk. I did not know this until recently, but they added an extra million dollars to um, build their regional technology training center here in Norwalk um, at their current facility. So people from all over the country now fly in to do their tech training, which is a pretty neat thing. Helps our hotels just, um, they're continuing to expand and grow. And they did mention that they have no problem getting good employees here in Norwalk, which is, um, good to hear because you know, Iowa doesn't have a huge population. We have low unemployment, so that's not always the easiest thing to fill a lot of, uh, jobs, but they do great at that. So that was good to hear. So our project West, the large data center technology project that we've been working on for about a year and a half. It's still full steam ahead. Things are going really, really well with them. The only real delay has been this annexation appeal. Let's help things up for several months. Um, we're still waiting on the judge's final decision. We we feel positive about it. Um, but there's still some things pending out there that could continue that okay, whole process. So we're looking at some legal alternative options for our development group so that we don't lose this, you know, half a billion dollar project over that. We hope not. Um, but we will start the development agreement process at the end of August with the city council. And it'll go through the whole urban renewal area amendment and creating a tip district and all that. So that's coming in the next couple of council meetings. Um, so new businesses recently opened, which most of you are fully aware of. It's just fun to mention them because they're doing such a good job. But, um, either recently opened and will be opening here in the next several months. Mullets, Penn High Golf, Never Bored Games, Vivid Life Spa, Flamingo Lounge, Goodwill, Pizza Ranch, Tru by Hilton, Nutrismoo being Cafe, Sports Nutrition Affiliates, D Moss Archipelago Centers, um, HT Sports, Ocean Athletics, Hot Works, Infinity Credit Union, Hyper Energy Bar, Site Nutrition, Domino's Pizza, Fairway, Frank's Restaurant and Sports Park and Culvers. Um, if you guys have not been inside Mullets, Flamingo Lounge or Penn High yet, you've got to go. They're such cool places. I mean, they're arena or, um, uh, game rooms, just the decor, their menus are really cool. It's just super unique for our area to have these. So, um, try to get out and support them whenever you can. With foreign relations, uh, the Kosovo Iowa delegation trip was held in June and I went and so did a council member Livingston. It was a great trip, super busy. Um, we met with the prime minister, the mayor of our sister city, which is Brew Street. And about several large businesses that are looking to expand into Iowa. Actually, Jackie, um, Livingston went down to Austin to tour a giant facility. The one that company is called Instabilt. They have a great big manufacturing plant in Kosovo and one in Austin, Texas. So we're working with them to try to get them into Iowa. Um, so she was just there and toured that in Texas. And then we also have a really cool police exchange program that's going on with Kosovo right now. Our Norwalk uh, police department's involved. They're sending officers in September with a bunch of other police departments in Iowa to create this exchange program. So our, um, two different police departments, um, Kosovo has a national police academy and so they are working with our kind of metro police departments on this program. So it's pretty neat. Um, and then lastly, I would just say the other thing that the mayor is really wanting everybody's support and help with is this All-Star Community Choice Award that Norwalk is in the running for through the Iowa League of Cities. And I think I emailed everybody about it, but if you didn't see that, it's on our city's Facebook page and all you have to do to vote for us to win this is just like the the image of um, the Norwalk project and it's for our Norwalk Central project. And it's just a really kind of big award that gets a lot of attention and notoriety for the communities that are are in that um, the finalists. So please do that. And then if you guys have any questions about anything, just switch out anytime.
Is the entrance monument, where where's that going to go?
Yeah, so that should be going up any minute now. They, um, have pretty much everything done for the fabrication and the engineering and all of that. But where it's at, yeah, I guess that's a map up there. So it's it's in our city right away that we purchased from the DOT a couple of years back. So it's really close to that, um, five exit. You see it right away when you're, um, coming off of five and heading south on twenty-eight. No, Elliot, if you're able to kind of like guess you got your cursor on it. Yep, it's right in that area.
No, it's probably north.
For the north. Is it up on the hillside kind of? I think they mowed it recently, didn't they?
Okay, keep going.
On this side? That's around here. I felt like there were stakes there and it was mowed somewhat recently.
They're getting really close.
Yeah.
So that should be done. And so since the new wall is going up, that and the entrance all coming together this year, which is going to look really nice. Or coming into Norwalk.
Will that be done by fall?
The sign should be, the wall might take a little bit longer, maybe winter.
Um, the fence improvement project that's going on?
Yep.
Any, that's the wall project. Okay, yeah, it just, what's going in looks really nice.
Yeah.
So I'm excited to see that.
You have all these new people coming into Norwalk. You know, that's the first thing they see and it's just, it was time.
Thank you, Holly. Luke, any update for us tonight?
Holly, a lot of the fun stuff, um. You know, some of the stuff you guys don't see, uh, that we deal with, uh, you approved a lot of projects, but we do a lot of management on the backend of making sure that things are done correctly and keeping people accountable. And especially this year with all the rain, we've had lots of complaints, lots of issues, lots of things to 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 work on. So just, you know, particularly Elliot, uh, spends a lot of time working with those folks. So just, you know, we compile all this stuff that you guys get to vote on and see and all that new stuff, but uh, we spent a lot of time this year, uh, on the backend, making sure that people do stuff the best they can. So we appreciate Elliot's time on that. I know I spend a decent amount of time on it as well. It's not the fun part of the job, but it's gotta get done. So.
Elliot, any update for us?
I think I was out of town last time we met. I was actually in Providence for a conference for Congress for New Urbanism and um, the Strong Towns National Gathering, which, uh, I've sent, I've sent you guys articles from Strong Towns before. That's a a, um, urban interest publication that I follow pretty closely. They do, um, they have like local groups around the country, over two hundred of them. And I'm actually one of the local conversation leaders here at the point. We're, uh, starting up our, uh, group relaunch. It kind of went dormant during COVID and it's had a little trouble getting regoing, but uh, we're starting a relaunch on Thursday. So that's exciting to do and just get with other people who are interested in that sort of thing, responsible fiscal management, smart growth, those sorts of things. Um, not smart in air quotes. Um, but yeah, so that's that's, um, good. That was a rewarding thing to do. I was able to get certification credits for that. So that's like a thing I have to do to maintain my AICP planner certification, which is good. Um, I don't really have any, I didn't prepare anything to share about it. Um, but it's it's good. The next one's real close. It's gonna be Northwest Arkansas. So if anyone's real geeky about her and planning things, but want to go to a conference that's not full of platitudes and where they don't pull punches, where they actually talk real, um, Northwest Arkansas is hosting it next year. They, um, at the region that is pretty big in the incremental development and small scale. Um, you know, small scale developer sphere rather than institutional developer sphere, which is what we see a lot of here in this community. Um, so that's kind of exciting. I got no other update.
And to confirm, our next meeting is going to be August eleventh at five forty-five, which is not a change. We're keeping it how it was. And, uh, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
Awesome, motions.
Stand a little second.
Oh, in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned at six twenty-eight PM. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Carson.
Yep, have a good night.
Dude, or maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's true. It does kind of lie over.